Great, good evening everybody. I'd like to call to order the meeting for the Planning Board for October 1st, 2019. First on our agenda, we have a joint meeting of the Planning Board and Zoning Board of Appeals scheduled. At this time, I'd like to invite the Chair of the Zoning Board of Appeals, Brad. Would you like to have this meeting to order?
The Zoning Board of Appeals meeting for a special meeting for Tuesday, October 1st, has come to order.
Okay, great. Just as we get started here, I think, I'm excited that we can all get together. I think that for the Planning Board, what we've been doing, looking at each month is different zoning bylaws that we'd want to bring to town meeting either next year or in the future. And certainly, as we look at the different zone, possible zoning amendments, we have our own perspective, what's going on in our front lines, but we don't necessarily have that feedback loop of what's going on on the ZBA front lines. So I think as part of coming together today, it's a good opportunity for a discussion to get that full 360 degree view of what's going on with our bylaws, how they're being applied on our respective front lines. We obviously cover different areas, but we also cover some of the same areas. So maybe just opening up a discussion and having that feedback loop that we can all get together and roll up our sleeves and have a good productive discussion about this. So Brad, do you have to sort of build anything to do on it?
Yeah, so I mean, first of all, I think it's great that the two boards are getting together. I can recall, I mean, I'm not one of the senior members, more of the junior member when Planning Board and Zoning Board got together, but really just like opening the dialogue and looking back into our history of decisions on things that we'd like to see potentially changed, things we'd like to see upgraded, and just review of some of these decisions and bylaws, whether that the decisions we liked, we didn't like, and things that we'd like to see changed as far as maybe updates in the amendments, review of the table uses, and training opportunities is a big one. I know kind of one of those, and it's been really helpful in things that the Zoning Board, how much leverage we have over certain decisions and conditions and things like that. So really, just keep it an open dialogue and really looking at different backgrounds of each individual, like Paul's on open space, so bring us some of your open space experience to the table. Fram, the master plan, of course. Mark and Dick, you guys are the senior members, you guys know a lot of these decisions and these bylaws in and out. And Leslie, you've been on both boards, and then Jeff, your attorney background as well would be helpful. So keep in mind when we're having these discussions and what we can bring to the table.
Just in terms of, I guess, housekeeping, I think what Brad and I talked about, maybe the best way for us to work together is just to open it up for a discussion, maybe not be as formal, just be able to have a productive discussion and talk about things that we don't have to necessarily be called on and something like that. And most will just sort of facilitate through the agenda, different areas to cover. We do want to end promptly, we're scheduled for each 30, so we'd like to just keep an eye on the time, and I'm sure we could talk about bylaws until the end of time, but just so that we can, you know, at least touch upon a couple of things. I think if we, if we walk away with a couple of things that we're finding based on the fact that, you know, we all are bound by the same book, we probably, we all want to make good decisions, we all have those sleepless nights, we all have new applications that are still in the back of our minds. So, you know, if we can kind of bring some of that to the table and talk through them, I think that that would be great in and of itself. So let's see, we wanted to do end at 8:30. Oh, and also, you know, this obviously is a general discussion, we don't want to be specific to any open application or anything before you go forward. So it's really not to talk about, debate any sort of applications before we're talking about the bylaws and what we're experiencing, if there's any areas that we throughout time have wished maybe were a little clearer, or things that we see approved all the time that maybe we should just be a bylaw so that it's on special permit, or vice versa, maybe it's something that's always denied. So let's talk about what we can change there, so just make it a little clearer for everybody, the board, the applicants, everybody involved. So with that, if there's anybody who's actually already thought about this and has something that they want to really talk about, certainly the floor is yours.
And as far as like special permits or anything?
Just any of the bylaws, if there's any.
Any ones that are currently written?
Yeah.
Yeah, they're currently written.
Hi, Michelle. We're just getting started.
All good.
I think maybe just to, you know, we don't have details on this tonight, it's coming up at the November Planning Board meeting, but just so that the ZBA knows, the Planning Board is looking at proposing a solar bylaw for, you know, large scale solar bylaws for town meeting this year, and also a hazardous waste facility bylaw. So those are two things that the Board has started to work on with the Regional Planning Commission's assistance. So the Board had one, this very general discussion with Central Mass Regional Planning Commission, and then they're going to come back to the November 5th Planning Board meeting, and hopefully they have some drafts for us. I dusted off the, it hasn't gone out to the Planning Board yet, but I dusted off the, you know, bylaw from about 2013, 13 or 14, I think it was, that we had brought to town meeting for solar. So those are two, I think, pretty definite, you know, big new bylaws that the Board, that the Planning Board is taking a look at, all ready for town meeting.
Well, okay, but I mean, I was just gonna say, I mean, I think one, an easy something to talk about to try to get dialogue is signs. Now, in 2015, we redid, revised our zoning bylaws related to signs in 2015. In 2018, we had 12 sign variances, so we either didn't address what the need was, or we needed to look at it again, but certainly signs, we spent a lot of time granting dimensional variances for signs. And that's a pretty straightforward something.
I would say just to build on that, you know, the sign, from what I heard, a lot of the sign variances that we were granting were in like the Shoppes Way area, which felt like it was away from downtown and didn't, that area was different than like, say, signs that you necessarily want in downtown. So whether or not, you know, having signs in certain areas have certain variance restrictions or guidelines, and then signs in, say, downtown have different variances, I mean, it could be a possibility because I think we can all agree, or maybe not, but, you know, what happens in Shoppes Way is completely different than what happens, say, downtown. In terms of the type of businesses or the types of viewing that people want to see for something.
Well, the other aspect of that too is a lot of these variances were the fact that the property was on a corner, so they had problems with visibility in multiple directions. So that if they, you know, our sign law seems to be designed for a commercial property along the road rather than a commercial property on the corner where they want a few direct, for safety, they want to highlight where their business is, but they're restricted by saying, well, we decided we wanted the traffic on, and we decided we leave Elton. I know that was a case of both CBS and I think your property as well.
And sometimes it has to do with the scale of the building, you know, and the stuff.
I mean, here, you know, very, here's something very interesting, just looking at this real quick, and I can, you know, get you more details on this, because I'm assuming that you're probably going to have more joint meetings, but the, in 2018, of those 12 signs, only three were for Shoppes Way. So that's very interesting to me. So what I can do, if that's, you know, I know we just started, but, you know, that's something that, you know, in-house, I can take a look at what those, what those sign variances were, you know, was it for height, was it for width? I mean, those are the two major, you know.
Yeah.
And see if there's something consistent, at least with, you know, nine of those. And what you have, I probably should have explained this at the very beginning, I mean, it's all sort of self-explanatory, but the sheets that you have in front of you are, disregard the yellow, that meant something when we first did these, but it doesn't mean anything for you tonight. But this goes back to 2002, which is, you know, pretty far back to look back, but since we had the data, we wanted to give it to you. So we updated, I think, three years' worth for you tonight. So you've got 2019 to date, and there's two, you know, open hearings on there. And like Kerry said, you can't really specifically speak to those, but, so we don't have those, we have a variance for one of those that has been granted, but the other two, 125 Rice and 425 Whitney are ones before the Planning Board, ones before the ZBA. But, so each one of these is broken down into how, what kind of special permit was granted, and/or what kind of variance was granted. And then again, I can give you, I have two years' worth here, just for me, for cheat notes tonight, but, you know, any one of these that people want to know, you know, what specifically was granted, you know, we can do that, I can do that through an email to everybody, or and/or your next meeting, and however you want to do that.
So when we looked at the sign bylaw last year, we focused a lot on the electronic portion more than anything else. So from your perspective, is it specifically as it relates to dimensional type variances that are really, like, coming through, or is it related to electronic at all?
I think it was more electronic and dimensional, wasn't it? Really, no, was it? Yeah.
It's going to be.
And more than the total square footage. And that was, that was, the venture was unique to Shoppes Way.
Yeah.
I mean, the Old Navy, they wanted to have more than their fair share, we had the ones that wanted on the backs of the buildings because of visibility. So those, I guess you don't really want to bylaw them in as okay, you probably do want to have them as exceptions to the rules.
Well, I think it'd be a worthwhile exercise to look at what was granted, where was it? What was the address? Was it dimensional, those type of things, just so we have something to analyze. And right now, I'm trying to think through memory, but that might be, this might be, the signs might be something for a later date, once we have a chance to dig into it a bit and see what we can approve and deny.
So then, Kathy, I mean, do you already have, besides the solar and the hazardous waste, were there ones that you were going to look to tweak, that you want us to focus on those, versus to Anthony's point, just, you know, throwing stuff at the wall? Because we haven't done any analysis on any of them, we just have this spreadsheet. Well, one area, oh, go ahead.
Oh, one other thing that, but we just started talking about at the last meeting, goes back to Shoppes Way's too, is the underlying zoning of Shoppes Way is industrial, and that's trucking warehouses, and we were thinking of changing that zoning to commercial to fit in the area now, because now it's, it's becoming commercial, you would hate to have a trucking by right pop in and be like, oh, it's going to change the whole area.
Or maybe the consideration is, I think we have an overlay for commercial on there, Kathy, don't we?
Yeah.
So maybe you flip it, right? Make the overlay industrial, so you don't lose that opportunity in case some unique, you know, business comes in there, and the underlying is basically all commercial, you know, something like that. There might be an opportunity right on Route 9 where an industrial would fit in, I mean, we just don't know how that whole area is going to pan out over years, but it definitely looks like, it feels like it's going to be all commercial.
Right, because industrial is more warehousing, trucking, natural resource extraction, fuel storage, it doesn't seem like any of that would fit there anymore. And Route 9 has its own highway business district.
Right.
So this would just be Shoppes Way area.
Well, we'd have to know how far the overlay district goes, but we certainly ease the need for special permits or variances if we made it commercial, with the exceptions being industrial versus industrial being the allowed, commercial being the exception. But I don't know, how far does the overlay go? Does it go like to the San people?
But I guess.
Look at that.
Kathy, you must have it up.
Yep, let me pause amongst yourselves, let me look that up. It talked, the applicability is, is that the major commercial development overlay district is superimposed on land in the industrial district in the vicinity of the Southwest Connector. So it left it semi-loose, because again, they need, you know, the Board's permission. It's the Zoning Board of Appeals for this one. So, you know, there's some leeway that if, if someone, I guess, you know, maybe closer to town, thought that it might be appropriate for their industrial zone land, you know, it would be up to the Board as to whether or not, you know, they would approve the overlay district to be applied on that, on that property. But certainly, the intent was that, you know, the Shoppes Way area, where the baseball fields are, you know, the, basically, I think from sort of Tomlin Hill Road to Route 9.
Is it in the map, the zoning map?
I mean, there, well, but it just describes it in the vicinity of the Southwest Connector. So, you know, again, it is from, you know, Tomlin Hill, you know, to 9.
But the entire industrial district up there did not give the entire overlay, or did, was it intended to be the entire? Because we can see on the zoning, you can see the pink is industrial, but the entire industrial area gets your name?
Well, again, it, you know, there's, there's leeway for, for the, for the, you know, application of it. But, yeah, I mean, looking at the, you know, the zoning map, you know, again, you are talking from, you know, Tomlin Hill Road, you know, south.
But for the industrial, there's no real leeway, because it's all, if you looked out industrial, they're all yeses, so they're committed by right.
Sure.
So then it wouldn't come before anybody, and then we'd be surprised, like, how did that get there?
Well, the, 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 the good thing about, you know, when you bring water and sewer, you know, to a site, the value of the land is, is increased, like, you know, exponentially. So you're, you're probably not going to see an industrial user there because they can't afford the real estate. I mean, generally, that when you add, you know, infrastructure, it's, you know, there's certain uses that automatically, you know, it doesn't make sense economically for them to be there.
Any other thoughts on that overlay, how that would affect anything, would you see it come to the ZBA?
Well, I mean, if, because it's an overlay, they need to have a special permit for a restaurant. To Michelle's point, I think we'd want them to have restaurant by right, and then ravel pit by exception. So, I mean, looking at revising the bylaw to, I don't know, you can actually split, I don't know, I can argue whether that's a problem issue to do, but that's what makes sense, right?
Well, then I also think just in that whole area with the land that's behind Bigelow's and everything, eventually someone's going to figure out the engineering to get access to it. That's an excellent housing area. So you could actually see a big development of like mixed use that's out there where you're going to have housing. So I don't know if it comes that far up, or is that different, Kathy?
No, that's actually zoned, the, I know the map is very faded, but that's actually zoned, it's north of the pink, in the, down in the lower left-hand corner, so it's all zoned residential, and, and probably about half of that, you know, between Shoesbury and the Southwest cutoff and West Main Street, probably about, maybe about half of that is owned by the state as flood storage property. So what you have is, you know, everything that's developed around Times Square. There's still some land there, though, around Times Square, actually, believe it or not, behind Times Square, does people, I don't know, I might be dating myself by calling it Times Square, but where Remains, where Remains is, so behind Remains, there's still a good chunk of business property that has access alongside, heading towards Shoesbury, has access alongside of, what's the last store, the barber shop, I think? So there's a, there's a, they have access in frontage out on West Main Street there. So that potentially could be more commercial development. But then, you know, heading, you know, towards Shoesbury, heading west, you have, you know, a lot of that is the Bigelow property and the Zeko property. And so like you said, that's its own residential, and then there's an overlay district specifically for that area of town, for a residential overlay district that would allow, there's a lot of wetlands in there, and hence the flood storage that's in there. So the, the bylaw, which has not been used, it's only for that area of town, you know, has density bonuses, and then, but extra open space would be preserved. So that's presently, you know, an existing bylaw.
How do you know if that went all the way up to Shoppes Way, but it doesn't?
No, but it, it actually, the residential abuts.
It's still Bogarty land back there?
Yeah, yeah. I was just going to say, if, if you haven't noticed it, you now will notice it. When you go up the secondary access to Shoppes Way, there's a gate, and there's a small access that just, like, just stops at the, at the, you know, top of the hill, and, you know, I believe that they put that in there for, you know, potentially, you know, either acquisition of some of the Bogarty land, or, or all of the Bogarty land, but the rest of the Bogarty land is, oh, is residential.
So the reality of those, the components of Bigelow's and Bogarty, there would likely be somebody, an entity to combine these properties. I mean, it's just something that should be on the radar, no matter what, if it's today or 10 years from now.
The specific overlay?
Well, yeah, whatever we're doing with this, I mean, just, I don't even say changing anything, just, it should be something that we should have our eye on, because it's a huge piece of property. If somebody were to combine those properties, if they were able to do that in some manner, which I think they can.
But that's all residential, so that has nothing to do with the commercial overlay district on the industrial?
Well, what did you say the overlay is on that? Didn't you just say, oh, you said the density bonus land?
Well, it's, it's, it starts on page 69 of the zoning, called the Residential Open Space Planning Overlay District. And it was specifically, oh, wait a minute, nope, I take that back, that is for residence B. The one that is for the Bogarty property.
I think it is resident C.
Is it, oh, okay, all right, then that is, okay. The other one is, is for, there's another open space overlay district. But yeah, okay, thank you, Amy. This one is, yeah, this is the one that's specifically for, again, in the vicinity of the Southwest Connector. And does everyone know what, when I say Bogarty, does everyone know, I mean, that's just a person's name, but they, they owned, actually, it's a family from Shoesbury, that basically owned all the land from the Route 9, Route 20 interchange, all the way through to West Main Street next to Ward Hill in Shoesbury. So there was, you know, it's hundreds of acres, and about half of it, they sold back in the early 2000s to Kevin Giblin originally, and that was the very start of what's now known as, you know, Northborough Crossing and where the Avalon Apartments are. And the rest of it is still, the residential portion is still owned by the family.
One area that, is there anything else on the overlays before we, I don't know? One area that I've identified, I think, in just through different various hearings for special permits, is the criteria. I wasn't sure if that's an area where Planning Board or ZBA finds challenges in the current criteria, if there's, you know, so some of the classes that I attended last year, they talked about the criteria for special permit, you should review it, and then, you know, frequently, make sure it's up to date, make sure it's supporting what you want in the town, but then also, they talked about, if you want a certain mitigation in place, you'd be in a better spot if your special permit criteria is supportive. So for example, if part of your criteria was safety for pedestrians and bike traffic, then you'd be better aligned to create, you know, if you were to ask a developer to put in sidewalks as part of a mitigation piece, because it was actually in your special permit criteria, but without a condition, so that you would be better positioned to put mitigation in place. So I don't know if that's anything, if either side wants to speak to our current criteria of how it's impacting our decisions, or if it needs to be tightened up or expanded, or anything like that.
So you can also do that through the master plan, which is the first criteria, where it says the coalsels and substantial housing can be included in the master plan. So I think this master plan frame, correct me if I'm wrong here, but has a section or a point on there about pedestrian safety, bike lanes, and that sort of thing, that's already on there. And if something is in the master plan as like a goal five, 10, 15 years from now, as a zoning board, you know, we can ask developers today, if it's in the master plan, to put it in sidewalks for whatever reason. And we, actually, we, the class we went to in April, we asked one of the lawyers there, a lot of work about specifically that, if it's in the master plan, can you ask, as conditions or whatever the case may be, to be able to do that. Now, I think, Kathy, I assume this, you brought up the fact of, if you do make a special permit to the condition for something like putting in a sidewalk, the developer typically doesn't follow through, right?
Well, there, it's.
And then it gets a little.
Yeah.
Or if you ask them to do something that costs extra.
Yeah, yeah. And the sidewalks is, as, as much as, and the Planning Board has been a huge proponent of sidewalks, but the issue that we're facing, and, you know, there's, there's got to be a way around this, but I, I don't know tonight to offer a solution, but it, but there's got to be a way around this. Because what, what happened in the past couple of years, and why we had to, you know, advise the Boards to stop asking for sidewalks on Route 20, was that the Mass DOT has policies where they, they won't take responsibility for the sidewalk if it's sort of like a lot by lot, which is what we were doing, you know, as, as, you know, a small, say, you know, like 109, West Main Street, you know, some of Tim Shea's properties right near the Marlboro Savings Bank, you know, those would have been perfect candidates to put a sidewalk in front of, so that, you know, with the hope that eventually all these pieces, you know, connect. But the, and this is, they didn't do this just in Northborough, this isn't usually in Northborough, but Mass DOT started realizing that that's what some towns were doing if you couldn't get a full-blown, you know, redo of, you know, Route, you know, 9 or Route 20. And so in our town, you know, it is Route 20. And so they said unless the town wants to take all the responsibility for that, you know, like 100 feet or 150 feet of sidewalk, then, and the town had to sign, you know, you know, a legal document with Mass DOT that we would take on that responsibility. And so, you know, the town, I think rightly so, said, why would we do that? It's not our street, you know, we don't plow it, we don't maintain it. So, so then Mass DOT said, well, we're not going to, you know, we're not going to approve the sidewalk designs. So that's, that's a standstill that we're at, and have been for a few years, which is why in particular, the Planning Board, you know, can't require sidewalks on Route 20.
Just out of curiosity, all the sidewalks that were put up in Westborough on Route 9 there?
Yeah, that's from.
You know, who, did Westborough agree to do that?
No, that's a whole Mass DOT. It's called, that whole project, the redoing of the Lyman Street intersection, that's been, that has been on what's called the TIP, the Transportation Improvement Plan for the state. So there, there's a TIP throughout the whole state, and each district then has projects, we're in District 3, so that, that project has been on the TIP forever and ever. It's just like when we got the signals downtown, and we had the sidewalks redone, that was all part of the state project.
So I get that, but, but did they ask Westborough to, for the ownership of it, or did the state say, no, that's only for like Route 20? Did they, did they do the same thing with Westborough?
Oh, oh, no, because I think it's, it's miles of sidewalk that they've just recently put in. So I would assume that that's, that that's all state maintained, because, you know, Westborough doesn't do anything with Route 9. I can, you know, I'll check, I'll follow up with Westborough on that, but, but that's, that was all part of, you know, a huge, like, if we, if we for some reason, you know, I mean, it would be years from now, but say we had, you know, I don't, you know, six miles of Route 20 that we needed to have redone, then you would incorporate, you know, that would be your opportunity. you know, that would be your opportunity to incorporate sidewalks and whatever else, you know, into that plan. You know, different kinds of streetlights, you know, things like that.
Just to your comment, in the former master plan, there was sidewalks in there, but we still went into the problems. It's just a complicated thing that we have to figure out how to get around it.
Yeah.
So we're trying to figure out how to put some need behind it so that we can either ask a developer or somehow, you know, through the master plan that we have coming right now, get some funding to make it happen.
I think, you know, just along the sidewalk, when, between Mass DOT and the Department of Revenue came out against the, well, actually not DOR, our auditors, had suggested several years in a row that the way that we were collecting money from developers, like in lieu of sidewalks, say on, you know, the one half of a cul-de-sac in a residential neighborhood, and say that sidewalk, you know, was valued at, you know, five thousand dollars. So five thousand dollars, the, the planning board weighed that portion of the sidewalk and that five thousand dollars would be put into an account for, for future sidewalks. And our auditor explained to us that, that we could, that we couldn't be doing that as a, as a municipality. It had, you know, you have, you'd have to do impact fees or there has to be another mechanism to collect that money. So at the time, the, I had conversations with the DPW director and the town administrator, and we had talked about that what we could, could do to solve the sidewalk problem, the funding and the actual construction of it, is that, you know, every, I'm just gonna throw it five years, let's say every five years, you know, there would be a capital item at town meeting voted on, at four, you know, again, these are just, you know, fake numbers, a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars worth of sidewalks, and they're going to be placed on, you know, these six streets. You know, so it would be a town meeting vote, and then the town would go out to bid and have those sidewalks created. But those would be on our streets, you know, town-owned streets.
I understand the thing about sidewalks too, and you know how you said that on Route Twenty, the state said that we would have to sign a waiver that we'd be in charge of them? Could you ask a developer to put in a sidewalk and also make the condition that they're in charge of buying it?
No, we tried that. We tried, the developer wants nothing to do with that. So we, we tried that as a workaround.
What about even criteria that say, I've seen other towns' criteria, and they have things like based on municipal services, so that provided that water and sewer can support it, or other municipal services can support it. Is there anything like that that we'd wanna consider part of our criteria? Or anything else, really, I'm just throwing things out there, assuming that this makes it. For me, I've noticed in the past that this can be a little gray, because a lot of these things are a little subjective or based on my opinion, but I wish there was something more black and white for me to think about. I don't know if anyone else has felt that way.
Guys, I mean, is there any, are there any special permits we kind of like, didn't really agree with, but granted because of these seven criteria? Is there any other type of criteria looking ahead, like one beat on the bone? I know we, last year we changed from shall to may, so it's not under the assumption that every special permit gets granted. Gives us a little more leeway there. Is there anything else you guys think of? Could be added to the criteria?
So it's a good thing for our meetings, let's go back and look at those, and before we do another joint meeting, we.
Yeah.
Get that in, spend some time studying it. Is that the bylaw that's still under review?
The, there's just one section, one particular article that the AG has asked for and extended time on, and that has to do with special permits.
Non-conforming.
Right.
Right, non-conforming. Well, I mean, it's really hard, because I think they're, they're loosey-goosey for a reason, because there's a balance between what we want and property rights, you know, owner's rights, and I don't know how you, I mean, I don't know how you change it. I mean, I guess if there were certain, you know, samples in the, in the class that, you know, would meet the AG's scrutiny, do we wanna make it more restrictive on the, more challenging on the property owner and their right to develop, so that it is something that from a town master plan standpoint is what we think we want to see there? But, and how you word it or what you add to it.
But I think like, so like for number one, and, sorry, keep, bring this again, but like, when it says like, substantial housing in Northborough master plan, the fact that we like have just done it, you can literally reference in your decisions whether you are for it against it, like the actual master plan saying like, you know, obviously this master plan is twelve pages, not longer. So if there's something that's for or against it, that whatever special permit, like it's very, the master plan is supposed to be, obviously, it's a town-focused sort of project that's, you know, you guys spent two years, eighteen months? Something like that, right? And it's supposed to be more representative of what the people of this town really do want in this town. Obviously, there's prioritizations that accompany everything, and it's supposed to be the catch-all. So having that obviously as a criteria, I think, is, is a good sort of catch-all for criteria in which we can use as a board to accept or reject. Saying like specifically, this project agrees with what the master plan's intent is, or it does not.
And I think if you look at it, you know, big like that on an actual level, that makes sense, but when it gets down to an actual project, an application in front of us, number three, the use that develops will not adversely affect the neighborhood, that's a hard one, that's probably one of the most difficult, because you want to, it's very difficult to weigh, but the neighbors all thought and want in their, you know, little area of town, and what is a reasonable interpretation of will not adversely affect the neighborhood. I mean, because it's always, it's all about perspective at that point, because this is my neighborhood, so I actually think it does adversely affect, but the zoning board has to look at it really in a, in a more neutral way. And that's probably the one that's more challenging, but I don't know, if I can get rid of it, and I don't think you, I don't think you put more teeth into it, but that is the one that, you know, causes the most, you know, conversation. Well, it's interesting, so I definitely hear your saying about the master plan, but then when you see the applications, every applicant writes yes, no, I'm gonna say no, it's not, but do they really read the master plan? No, probably I assume not. So if the burden of proof is on the applicant to some extent, how do you even meet that criteria? They should have to cite it just like they do the regs, right? I mean, why not? Why don't, why can't that be a question on the application? We ask them to cite the regs, cite where in the master plan you think this is in harmony? I don't think that's, you know, unreasonable.
Yep. The burden of proof is always on the applicant.
Yeah. Not in fairness, we do sometimes take their word for it. I mean, to be totally honest, we do, and we don't think that, you know, they're intentionally trying to stick it to us.
Well, not even though the master plan is backwards and forward or so.
Yeah, right. It's a lot of anything that people wake at night. But I do, I think that's just another question on the application, right? You know, please cite, if I can do the zoning board, simple.
I know I did go to a special permit class too, and I don't have the papers in front of me, so if we do meet again, maybe I'll go back and read it and see what they have for suggestions. Because I can't remember off the top of my head, but they probably were some good ones.
Yeah, just to point it out. Yeah, I think much to what you said, Fran, like, maybe you go a step further when you talked about, because a lot of times neighbors will come in even to us and say how it does affect their neighborhood. So maybe you say, show us proof on how it doesn't affect traffic-wise, you know, sound, you know, you hear, is it sound, is it traffic, is it visual stimulation lights, you know? How is your project not going to? You know, simple enough, I've gone before the design review committee, and we know that for lighting, everything stays on the property, right? You know, for traffic study, I'm willing to do a traffic study. And then simple things like that, maybe you could add it a step further, so then the neighbors realize before the applicant gets, before the ZBA, that a lot of their concerns have already been addressed. Right? They think that there would be traffic, increased traffic, but they realize that it's only two cars versus the thirty cars that they imagined. You know, or something like that, or vice versa, they, the ZBA finds out it's gonna be a significant amount of traffic.
Any other areas? Anything with setbacks or buffers between zoning districts or anything like that?
Um, yeah, actually, I was just thinking about this recently. Yes, setbacks and buffers. We've had some, a couple of applications recently that residential is a budding business. And I don't expect residents to understand this until there's an application in front of them. But maybe there is a way to help grow the business in Northborough while also keeping that small town feel, making sure the residents are happy and content. Because as a zoning board, we're only, we're presented with a certain application. Would we want a coffee shop, a bookstore in place of some of these other things? Absolutely, as a resident, absolutely. But it's not a thousand make-up, so it's up to the application in front of us, we have to decide on that application. And I think it would be easier on everybody to have, I mean, I think more of a buffer zone between those districts.
I'd like to make a, a comment about that. So over the years, you know, we talk a lot about creating natural buffers zones, which is, you know, you have like a hundred or a hundred feet of no cut or whatever you've got of no cut. The problem with that is, and if a developer comes in and says, great, I have no problem, I'm gonna do landscaping or whatever, you know, one of my issues that landscaping is only valid for one year, and I remember this distinctly with Walmart, when I went in, they were supposed to do all this landscaping on the side. That was great, if the trees die down after a year, they're gone, you have, the town has nothing to stand on, that's all that they're required to keep it up for a year. Same with any of commercials. So we might want, as a board, look to extend that, you know, forever, or, you know, within a reasonable amount of time. Because if you do have like a clear cut, and then you get some sort of business going in or industrial, and then that guy says, I'm gonna do twenty-five feet of, you know, new trees or whatever, and they don't take what they take for one year, then it's gone and there's no, nothing between the buffer between the homeowner and the commercial. So that's true, Kathy, it's just one year, right? So I think it'd be really valuable to look beyond that and say, must be at least ten years, you know? And then it may even to go to the extent of where you get into the little nitty-gritty, and there's a certain circumference of the tree, you know, you're not putting the baby trees in, you're putting a decent size, so that, you know, then the, then the residents feel like, okay, now I'm sort of protected.
The, just, you know, for, for everyone's reference, the buffer, the site design standards for commercial and industrial start on page eighty-two, but as far as landscape buffers, it's eighty-three, eighty-four? Just, you know, I mean, wouldn't you wanna continue talking about that or just for future reference? But that's where it talks about, you know, what needs to be between business and residential, business and business, and, and business and industrial.
Explain to me something with flag.
Yeah, something with flag in a review for a future meeting, though. But, yeah, just, I think it's first, maybe just getting these ideas out in the open.
Yeah.
I think it's a great idea.
I think originally it was in the master plan, but I don't know if it came out. Like, because we've updated our goals and recommendations so many times, one of the goals or recommendation was to look into the buffers between residential and industrial. But off the top of my head, I can't, I have to look to see it there.
Yeah, I, I don't think there, I think it, I think it was discussed, but it's so specific, you know, where, again, where you get, you know, the master plans appear, and, you know, and then every, you know, everything filters down into the various boards, and, so I don't think the master plan like ended up having a recommendation about, it's like buffers per se, but probably about, maybe more about development being in harmony, you know? And then you get into the, you know, you get into the specifics of, okay, well, how does it, how do you make it in harmony? Well, that's one of the things, you know, providing buffers. And then the other thing you have to think about, or should think about, is, you know, when you, when you look at, say, buffers as an example, and, you know, a lot of times people will just visualize, oh, well, it's, you know, it's twenty-five feet. Well, wouldn't it be great if it was fifty feet? So what you have to then think about is, then you have to look at your setbacks, and you have to look at your impervious coverage, and, you know, just by increasing your, your buffer, you think, oh, that's gonna help with the sound, and, you know, it's gonna look prettier. Or what you've just done is reduce the building envelope, you know, for, for whether it's commercial, industrial, or residential. And, and, and you might end up making the lot, you know, undevelopable, and that's, and you can't do that, you know, through your regulations. You can't render a piece of land, you know, undevelopable. So it's something to keep in mind, that it's, you know, it's always a compromise, but, but any, any regulation that we add, you know, we, we have to look at, and like in house, we always do an analysis of, you know, what does that, you know, what does that do? How, how many lots does that affect? And then, you know, on, on, you know, looking at this, the acreage on the property, and again, you know, what does that do to the building envelope? And do you end up making it impossible to put in drainage in a parking lot in a building?
Any more comments from zoning board on the buffer zones and things like that?
Well, we've run into that a lot in this twenty, with the industrial business, we have heard twenty, we need to be behind that on small residential lots. And the business lots are not, they're not a lot of depth, they are, or acreage, so we've run into that a lot, and people in the residential, they want a buffer, a lot of a tree, but there's no work, I think you have to say. That's a lot that's too small, and make it unbuildable, I make it on.
That's true too, I mean, that's, yeah, you gotta strike that balance, because we do, definitely want to develop especially downtown, I know that's.
Well, the other thing that you can look at is you get closer to the downtown, you think about, well, that's more walkability. So then you look at your parking, and you say, if my, normally in a building you would require ten or fifteen spaces, maybe you say, I bring that down to ten spaces instead of fifteen, you reduce the amount of parking spaces, so you have a little bit, we've talked about a little bit less impervious cover, you get a little more green space in there, you know, and the businesses understand, I mean, it's not something in downtown where you desperately need parking, but you look at maybe a little bit of give and take on these tighter lots, you know, where you're not having as much parking, but you can get some green space in there.
Definitely.
Anything else here? Anything open space-wise that we was more considering, or?
I have looked into it a little, but I'm just starting, because I noticed our industrial, our open space is only like, I'd have to go back and look, it's like twenty percent.
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five, but when I looked at Westborough, it was like between forty and sixty. So some of our lots that I've looked at, I sometimes question, I see the site plan and it's like, the building, the parking lot, there's like no trees left. And some of them I go back to, when I read the definition of lot coverage, you know, we allow so much lot coverage and it doesn't include the parking. So, so if our open space is like twenty.
It does. Lot coverage is, is basically anything that the water can't get through. So it's buildings, sidewalks, parking, driveways.
I'm gonna look at the definition, I'm just looking at it recently.
So I guess Amy, your point for dimensional stuff for industrial?
Yeah.
The minimum lot area is sixty thousand square feet. The open space is twenty-five percent. Maximum lot coverage is fifty percent. What page is that? Uh, that is page fifty-four. And then the maximum height is sixty feet. And it has a forty front, twenty side, twenty-five, and a shutback.
Recently, and not just recently, but like we've gotten a lot of steer to, some of the industrials that come in front of us, I look at the drawing and it's like, it looks like it's all building and all parking lot. So I'm trying to figure out if there's.
No, they're, they're not even anywhere close to fifty percent. But what, what has been approved out on Bartlett Street? Is that what you're talking about?
No, I wasn't. It was a different one, I'm trying to think, maybe the one over by the railroad area, or, oh, not, not Whitney Street, there's one on, it had the railroad stuff. There's one on, it had the railroad stuff and stuff. But when I looked at it, it looked like a lot of parking, a lot of building.
The New Corne.
Yeah.
That's on the line.
Yeah.
About Lyman and Railroad.
Tappan River, yes.
Railroad, yeah.
Yeah. But it, yeah.
A couple of those. And I, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but it looked like almost the whole space was covered. And I was curious how there was twenty-five percent open space. And then I started looking at other towns like Westboro and they had forty to sixty percent open space. So I was gonna look into it, but I, I really haven't had time yet. It was just something in the back of my brain. Because I know with the new industrial, there's been a lot of, you know, on Bartlett, there's been a lot of tree kind of, look at this, tons of trees, yeah. But it says, coverage shall not include areas paved at grade for driveways, walkways, uncovered parking. Does that mean if you can only do fifty percent? But it says, coverage shall not include areas paved for driveways, walkways, and uncovered. Does that mean those don't count as part of fifty percent? That's the way I was reading it.
What page do you want, Amy?
I'm on page, I have the old book. I'm on page seven dash seven. I'm under definitions at the very beginning. Or lot, uh, lot coverage. So a lot of the times, like industrial, it says fifty percent lot coverage. But coverage shall not include paved areas, driveways, walkways. So it makes me think, well, if you can cover fifty percent of the lot of the building and then cover thirty more percent with parking and driveways, that leaves your twenty percent open space, twenty-five. But when you look at these lots, sometimes twenty-five percent open space is like a huge, like a ten-foot narrow strip around the whole thing.
Yeah, I, I do think that some of the industrial, especially over by Bartlett Street, those tracts of land are huge. I think that if you're talking about the Mormon sense of that, that's a good point here. I wanna say that that's like a sixty or seventy acre piece of.
Yeah, parcel.
Like, it's huge. So, but yes, as a member of the open space committee, I would suggest that it has the open space requirements.
Yeah, that's, I just wanna look into it. I just, yeah.
We're looking at more open space. I agree.
And not in the form of paved parks or, are there not any sidewalks?
No.
Is that what you guys are reading it to? Or it says coverage not included? So then?
See, just about everything is in a groundwater area. And so for groundwater area, your lot coverage incorporates all of that. The, the parking and driveway, you know, the paved, the driveways, I guess. So that, so most of it, most of it is covered by the overlay district, but still.
So maybe we should bump up open, minimum open space a little bit more. I, I even remember from when I first started on the planning board once, we had to have open space, I think, in a neighborhood. And the open space ended up being a ten-foot buffer of trees. And I'm like, this is like from here to there. I was like, that, that isn't a lot of open space.
Yeah, there is no open space for a residential.
I think in subdivisions, there might be.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, in, in the subdivision of the regs.
But it ended up being a really small amount. But, yeah. So I guess, like, we can look at the open space. That would be good.
How did the adjustments to the setbacks work? Did you guys get adjustments last year, two years ago?
Well, I don't think so.
Were there adjustments to the setbacks?
It just was with families, just sort of too vulnerable. Yeah.
Amy, are you suggesting open space only for industrial?
That's where I started looking, but, yeah, I haven't, I really haven't looked any further than that. It was, it was just there.
I'm thinking of, okay, seeing if that was, what the impact would be if this were to be higher.
Those have been like the only site plans in front of me, so I haven't really, we haven't done a subdivision, so. That's why I was thinking, start with industrial.
Yeah, because I think to some other people that have mentioned, some of the lots are so small that you couldn't, you know, when you're in downtown business, it's just really small lots. I mean, fifteen spaces, yeah.
Kathy, years ago, we had talked about, I, I felt changing or doing away with one of the groundwater overlay districts because it wasn't really necessary. I mean, I'm looking, you don't really get many, other than two thousand sixteen, when there were ten special permits with the groundwater overlay. You don't get that many, but is that something that, you know, I don't remember why we stopped looking. There was something about the state already has more restrictive, so why do we even have a one, two, and three?
Yeah, well, we, the, when, when the town went to, came, came off our wells, our individual municipal wells, and went to getting all its water supply from the MWRA, we thought that there would be an opportunity to possibly, looking at revamping the groundwater protection overlay district and changing the bylaw to match up with, with what the state has for area, we have areas one, two, and three. I believe the state has a one and a two. But the, the determination has been made in conversations or discussions with DEP is that we can't ever officially take our wells offline and, and mothball them because what then happens is, if you ever needed them in an emergency and/or if you were to put your wells back online, you would have to meet all the new standards at that time as opposed to the standards when the wells were, you know, were first put, put in, whatever the right term is. So, so even though we do use MWRA water, the wells are not going to come offline. So we have to keep the groundwater, you know, protect the groundwater a, as if the wells were online.
Okay.
So, so that's why we still will maintain the areas one, two, and three.
Thank you.
Any final comments, questions on that?
Do you think that's something we can look at this year or, I mean, for next year, for bumping up the open space in industrial?
For next year, for twenty-one. That, I mean, that's all up to you, but it, it couldn't be for this year.
So stuff for ATM twenty-twenty is?
No, 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 but that's just.
It's a, I know it's a big project.
Yeah.
Gotcha, okay.
Yeah.
That's all of it, okay. But it's, it's not like, is there a specific deadline?
No, well, I mean, not, it's, it's our own. And, I mean, there is a deadline that will be coming, you know, the same deadline every year from the town administrator as to when, you know, drafts need to go in and then when the warrant, you know, the draft warrant is prepared for the selectmen and then when it's closed. And that's all in, you know, like a February, March, right, March?
This year.
Um, I, sorry to put you on the spot, but I think, yeah. So, you know, so any bylaws that, that we're considering, we, you know, a staff, we should be, you know, working on them now. You know, not, maybe not this very second, but, you know, we should be thinking about them now as opposed to, you know, January, February, when, you know, the deadline is coming up.
All right, we'll move on to another part of our agenda. So one of the things I'm gonna bring up are table of uses. Obviously, we're not gonna get into specifics about certain applications at all, but just with technology evolving, things like that, I just feel that maybe we need to enough turn this into a huge, like, a hundred-page document, but maybe get some more detail behind these uses. Like, I was just going through, reading, like, we still talk about CD-ROMs. You know, and we get rid of it the next day, someone will come in and want to read back CD-ROMs. But, you know, just get it more up to date, up to speed. Because nowadays in this economy, people are just trying to find a new niche, something that's very innovative and things that wouldn't exactly fit into any one of these categories. So the question is, how detailed do we wanna get? How high level, you know, just kind of, not just protect the boards, but make life easier for the zoning enforcement officers while we work on these applications? Any comments on that? And again, just not getting specifics about certain applications, but at a high level.
Yep. I'll just say that at our last meeting, and I was, I think, for the rezoning, Dick was around, you were around during the rezoning in two thousand nine. Were you around, Fran?
I was on the committee.
You were on the committee. So there's only probably three of us here, but even going back, I look now at some of the definitions and how dramatically things have changed.
Yeah.
With some applicants who are coming before. So we had a really thoughtful discussion at our last meeting. And I think that's something that we might try to tweak even for this town meeting. But definitely going through and trying to tackle some of those look-alts.
And we got rid of the pigmories and have a dasher. They were still sitting in the books, but.
And I think like hat maker, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I see the C on the diskette.
But even like for business use, trade, retail store, I mean, that could be everything and anything. It's just.
Okay, great. All right, so next on our agenda, we have, we got some information last time. We had voted to get additional information from the town council in a couple of different areas related to a couple of applications in terms of the use and then also the appeal process in general. So Kathy shared with us that information that came back from town council. If everyone had, did everyone have a chance to take a look at it? I just wanted to take a couple of minutes here, the next twenty minutes or so, if anybody had any additional comments or information that we want to clarify or something. Yeah, there was just a little copy. There was a email that Kathy forwarded for the.
Do you have a copy of it, Amy, that, for me to take and read it?
Yeah, I have my copy. I don't remember actually, but you can read it if you want. I wanna see which pages.
Millie, I can make you a copy. Is there anyone else see one?
I don't know if I actually saw that.
So just to recap, we had asked, we'd taken a vote at the last meeting.
Oh, okay, so take a minute. Why don't you take a minute with Kathy to that, if you want to. Okay. Okay, Michelle, you had read it before.
Yeah, you're all set.
Okay. So the question that we originally asked was, in terms of an appeal, if, if there are the instance where you wanted to question the use determination and wanted to actually appeal that determination, what is the, where is it that you can actually do that? If it's not at the board level, where and when, under what premise can you do that? So town council provided an answer regarding the difference, the availability for an appeal and when that could happen. Was there any area that anybody had any question on or didn't make sense or they wanted to get additional clarification or any discussion?
Well, I'm just going back and looking at it now. So it says the appeal period is thirty days. So. So any person, including an officer or board of the city or town, buddy of the city. So the way I'm reading that is? The planning board, not saying that we're gonna appeal anything right now. I'm just saying, is this saying that we could appeal within thirty days? I know it says in most instances, it's. So we, as planning board, wanted to appeal a building inspector's interpretation. You'd have to do it within thirty days, but.
No, no. I, I mean, it's that, no. The, what this explains is that you don't have the ability, the, the state statute, there, there's no ability to appeal an interpretation by the zoning enforcement officer. So this thirty days involves if it's by a person who has an inability to obtain a permit or enforcement action. So if a permit is denied, if a building permit is denied, then that person can, you know, if for whatever reason, you know, they can't work it out with the building inspector, they can appeal to the zoning board of appeals. And then if a person has requested that there be some enforcement action taken, you know, someone's not complying by a decision or, you know, I, it's never happened here, so I can't really think of a solid example. But, so if, if they, if you have, as the state statute says, if you're agreed by the fact that there wasn't enforcement action taken, then that, you can appeal to the zoning board of appeals in thirty days from, you know, not getting any action. So there's not the ability for a board to, or a person, to appeal a zoning interpretation from the building inspector.
I think I did look it up online, though, and there were a couple of cases where they did. I'm not trying to say he's right or wrong, but I did find case law where, it was in Massachusetts.
If I read this correctly too, it states that the interpretation is for informational purposes only, does not give permission to construct, alter, demolish, or change the use of a property. So that, I guess, would fall back on approval board. Is that correct?
What falls back on?
So it just says for information, that the interpretation, if I'm reading this correctly, says that states on the face that the interpretation is for informational purposes only, does not give promotion, permission to construct, alter, demolish, or change the use of the property. So if it's just for informational purposes, and again, if I'm reading this correctly, then what does it mean?
It's, it's not, well, I mean, the, the, the whole paragraph is the zoning interpretation form that our building inspector or zoning enforcement officer fills out is, that's not appealable. There's not, there's nothing in the statute that you can't appeal that. It's an interpretation form that the building inspector, you know, someone fills it, fills it out. I mean, you've all seen them. They're, they're in every application. So an applicant, you know, fills it out and says, this is what I plan on doing, you know, in such and such zone, you know, whatever. They, I mean, there's a, you know, Bob's got a form for it. So they fill that out and they give it to Bob. And then he goes through the zoning and determines, you know, if it's allowed, is it not allowed? Do you need a special permit? Is it, you know, do you have to, I mean, we don't tell people to apply for variances, but, you know, you sort of choice if you wanna go apply for a variance. Do you need, you know, groundwater? Do you need design review? So, so he fills that portion of it out. So that's the zoning interpretation form. So then that's the first step that, you know, that someone, you know, comes in. form. So then that's the first step that, you know, that someone, you know, comes into town hall and asks if they can, you know, do something on their property.
Okay, so then in that form, then based on the zoning interpretation, then there's a set of special permits or whatever else is needed in order, based on that interpretation or based on what that use is, you then get a subset of all the special permits that you need. So it sounds like he's saying by way of, by the action of the zoning board is when the decision is made.
Right. So someone takes the, the zoning interpretation form basically kind of lays out someone's roadmap for them as far as, you know, what section of zoning it's either allowed in, is a special permit by, or you need a variance, and what else you have to do. I don't have one in front of me, so I don't have, I mean, Bob's got all kinds of boxes and stuff to check.
So if the use is not a decision, if this use form is not a decision.
Right.
Then it looks like any, after, any decision that kicks off another 30 days. So.
No, the zoning interpretation form is, is, is just that. Like, not every town has a zoning interpretation form.
So it's not.
We happen to have one here in North Row that, you know, applicants find very helpful, you know, whether it's a homeowner, you know, or, or a business. So then after you get that, then you decide, you know, as the applicant, whether you want to go through the process or not. So then you apply and you then go to, you know, whichever board the applicable board is, and then you get your decision. And if, and if the applicant or another board or, you know, a party that has standing, if they are aggrieved by that decision, then that's where the 20-day appeal period kicks in. And that's the, and that's what's further explained in the email from Town Council. And the 30-day appeal has to do with if someone is aggrieved by a decision of the building inspector, then the decision being whether or not they get a permit, a building permit or not, or if someone requested enforcement action and that enforcement action wasn't followed through by the building inspector, then they, then a person can appeal that to the zoning board of appeals.
Okay, so if, if as a board, we see the use come through and we question the use determination, what as a board can, what is our role in this? What is our action? What? So we have this, if we're experiencing that at the end of the line, and if the interpretation form is not a decision, it's just informational only, it would make sense that when the, oh, Michelle, then.
Okay, so I've been through this process where I filled out an application for a zoning interpretation request. And he, you know, for me, it was a sign. And then he said, you know, here are your dimensional requirements, here's the process, and, you know, here's what you need to do, which is basically what you explained, sort of roadmap. Doesn't approve it, doesn't deny it, just says, you know, this is what you need to do. I think with your question is, is what if you have something, you're like, wow, that seems a little off? I think that means that the zoning interpretation officer, the way he's interpreting your zoning is different than the way you're thinking, and then the zoning needs to be changed, right? So if you said, you know, you need a sidewalk here, and he's like, you didn't see it, and then you say, well, maybe that was too gray, and then we need to go back and look at, do you actually need a sidewalk there? You know, something's in your zoning that's allowing him to make that interpretation the way it is. So I would say, you know, it's almost like we talked tonight about why are these use variances or uses happening and special permits, you know, you need to go back and look at your zoning. So to your question is, if he gets an interpretation form and he says, yeah, I think this use is allowed, but you're like, well, how did you get that? Then somehow through his interpretation of reading your zoning, and maybe to what Amy said, maybe you become a little more black and white and less gray in that interpretation, or whatever, you know. So, and in this situation, whatever, you know, he's looking at, he's going, he's going to the opposite side of what you thought he would, you know, approve, make this interpretation, then maybe you become more black and white, as Amy said. Do you become more restrictive in your description, more descriptive and, you know, less gray? Because maybe it's the less, more gray that could suit into the problems that, you know, you're saying. This is a question that you had asked the ZBA. Is the grades getting us into these problems and do we need to become more descriptive in our zoning?
I think for all sides, not, I mean, for us, for the building inspector and for the applicant, because if he's, you know, then he could open up a lawsuit against the town, too, you know, saying, well, I read it this way and you're reading it that way. And when I read the bylaws, there's a very specific point that says if it's not permitted, it's prohibited. And we've been talking about that for years. But recently, in the past year, a lot of things are coming up. And I read it like, well, it's not permitted, so it must be prohibited. Oh, no, I think it fits over here. So I feel there's a lot of gray and creativity. And, I mean, not that that's a bad thing, but I think it's hard. It's hard for Bob, it's hard for the boards, it's hard for the applicant. Like, then if it says, if it's not permitted, it's prohibited. Is anything actually prohibited? Because it seems like, everything seems to find a place. Is there anything that's really prohibited?
So then how can we always stay ahead of it? We'd always have to guess, like, how is this going to be unless, when a zoning determination is made, they were actually notified at the time that it's made so that it's not, you know, X amount of time later where we suddenly see it and we, the application's next week and we don't really know how the thing fits into our bylaws, so.
Well, that's why I talked about how in design review, there's a three-step process. And maybe the applicant comes to Foye and says, hey, I want it to look like this. And by the way, my front doors are going to be pink. And you're like, oh, no, we're not having pink doors in town, right? So you need to go back and bring us something more palatable to accept. And, you know, and then you go to your step two and then step three process, maybe. And I don't know whether you can even do this, Kathy, but maybe some, you know, in these zoning interpretations, you, I don't know how you'd even be able manage that, because he must do a ton of zoning interpretations.
Oh, yeah.
Where people.
He probably does four or five a day.
Yeah. So, you know, if he does 100 a month, I mean, does the board want to look at all 100 of them?
Well, I would say just the one, in my opinion, please, I didn't want to speak up, but the ones that are at least coming before, not so much like if you need a permit or a bathroom or anything like that, but more like if it's an application coming to us, you know, it's coming to us six months later, maybe we're just aware of it as it's coming out to fruition. So that's, like, we're ahead of it anyway and we can kind of.
May, maybe you'd want to look at uses, you know. But I don't know.
Because I think it's hard, because Bob wasn't part of the 2009 zoning decisions when he said, well, let's do this because we want it to, the town to look like this or do this. You know, when you guys took part in the 2009 zoning decisions, you knew what you had in mind. And we've gone through a couple of them, Inspector, since Bob hasn't been here that long. So he reads our bylaws, but he doesn't know what the intent of some of the things were. So I find it, unless he's listening to our meetings when we're writing the zoning, or if he goes back and reads the intent of the 2009 bylaws, if they're too gray, then it's, it's hard for him and the applicant and for us.
Have you noticed anything from 2008, 2009 that sort of didn't pan out the way that maybe the committee thought at the time or?
Oh, yeah. I think if you look on Main Street, you look at, I mean, Kathy, we thought about how nice it would be to pull the buildings forward, you know, to the front of the street. And the one time we did that, it didn't work out, but that was the unique situation. But you would find also that a lot of lots don't allow it. And primarily that not a lot of developers prefer to have the parking in front. So that's sort of a transitional, we were hoping that the transition, I mean, 10 years later, we were hoping that that transition would take in place. We'd have those buildings move closer to the front with the parking in back. And of all the buildings, I would say maybe one just happened on Main Street. And the majority of them have the parking in the front, you know, or on the sides. So, and they don't like to have the parking in back. They'll be pretty vocal about it. They'll tell you, we don't like it, we don't like that part of your zoning. You know, we feel like our clients and our customers don't prefer it that way. And although we had some sort of an envision of it, it doesn't seem to work for Route 20. You know, so that's a classic example. I was going to bring that up tonight, but that's a classic example of, you know, and then you have those long, narrow lots that just don't work for it, right? I mean, a perfect example is the one right next to the cleaners that we just approved, where they wanted the building up front and then it went up back with the parking in the front, you know. And I think that's probably happened all the way down Route 20, including the one where, you know, the tavern on the square is, is another perfect example of where they didn't want to do it, so.
Okay, but use-wise, have you seen anything that just isn't what was intended or the focus wasn't really uses back in 2008, 2009?
Oh, no, the entire use table was redone.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
The entire zoning bylaw, except for the groundwater section, was redone.
I think it would be a really good exercise, because I did look at some of the use numbers. In some years, they were fairly high, but it could have been the Shopsway that did it. In some years, they're not as high, you know. You know, you get 12, you get 10 at some year. So it might be worthwhile looking back at what those uses were and was it in the geographic area? And maybe it was just in the Shopsway, which we're talking about now. That should have been all commercial anyways. It wasn't industrial, that's where you get your use variance from.
Yeah, yeah. There's a lot of use variances in that section.
Well, I think the one thing that makes me a little concerned is when they start to intersect or, you know, that the lines become blurred, is that, like we see in some cases where you actually, you don't have to then go to design review, or you don't have to follow the commercial guidelines because you're not a commercial or, like, you get to circumvent, not even really intentionally maliciously, but just by way of our bylaws. If you get paid, if you go with a certain use and perhaps that's a little questionable, you can circumvent a little bit some things that you would normally want to see for that use, had it been, you know, that, the business was in the right, swimming in the right lane. So that, those things make it difficult, I feel like, for a board when we see that. How do you, do things start to slip through the cracks? So, not that I want to go through the exercise of going through every single bylaw, line by line, but how do we not let things fall through the cracks like that? Or does anyone else observe that or any thoughts on that?
I see, too, but I think maybe we are going to have to go through a section and update it. And I don't know how we get around it.
Is there a copy somewhere of the 2008, 2009 changes, just to kind of like follow the path at all?
Yeah, we probably have the 2009 bylaw.
Oh, so it's just that one year? It wasn't a multi-year?
No, it was a multi-year project to get to that. And then it was brought to the 2009 town meeting. Originally, it started off as just a, let's, let's just do, gosh, it was so long ago, but.
I know.
It, because it wa, it morphed into an enormous project, because I think what we originally thought, we'd hired a consultant and we were like, you know, we formed a zoning subcommittee. And, and we looked at it saying, okay, you know, let's, let's start, let's just update the bylaw. And, you know, a couple of months into it, it, you know, the committee and the consultant and myself realized that this is, this is not an update, you know, because if you touch, you know, this section, it touches, you know, six more sections. And then if you, you know, go to that section, then it, you know, because each section is, even though it's a standalone subject, they're completely intertwined. So what we ended up doing was, you know, applying for additional money and we changed the contract and expanded the project to, at the committee's request, that it was a complete rewrite of the zoning. And, and so it ended up being like Fran, are you still here, Fran?
Yeah.
It was.
Every Monday for 18 months, two and a half hours.
But, but it was, so it was, it was a huge project. And so that, and that all came out of the community development plan, which was kind of like our mini master plan in between master plans. And so, you know, I think there's the potential, you know, when the master plan is completed, that, you know, it's probably a process that you want to go through again. Because, you know, zoning isn't, isn't stagnant. I mean, you don't.
Right.
You know, you don't want to go, you know, if you're going to town meeting every year with 15 articles, then you got an issue with your zoning bylaw. You know, but if you're going with a couple every year, you know, that's a good thing, you know. Again, it's evolving, you're updating it, it's, you know, technology is changing. But, I mean, I, I could definitely foresee that there's another zoning subcommittee, you know, project that comes out of the master plan.
But I actually think this is a good snapshot, what we got tonight, all of these, you know, from the ZBA, of what's working and what's not. And I think you probably can see some sort of consistent thread through this.
And then what, what we didn't have time to do, I mean, this is kind of off the subject of the appeals, Carrie, but, you know, back on the tallies that we did for the ZBA, what, what Debbie did when we first did this project, like back, you know, almost 20 years ago, we pulled out all the parts of every decision so that every, you know, when we did this with the ZBA, everyone knew, oh, okay, you know, that, that dimensional variance that was granted for, you know, six Main Street was because, you know, and we, you know, we had the backup material so that you could look at it and go, oh, that's, that's, you know, that's what it was for. So, you know, I don't think you're going to need it all the way back to 2002, but, you know, I'm thinking maybe for like for the past five years, you know, we can pull that out for the, you know, for one of the future meetings.
Okay. So I guess what I'd want to get down to the bottom of, and I don't know if it's clear and clear, is if the zoning interpretation request form is only informational, then when does it become a set in stone? It's only when the ZBA takes action that it becomes actually the use. But where do we have the chance to question the use? Like, where is our opportunity to talk about use, whether it's the planning board or ZBA or whoever? If it's, if they're coming to, if applicants are coming with the application to the meetings and it's assumed to be the decision, but it's actually not, it's just informational, where is that point? And I think that's what that resident was asking about when we brought this discussion, is where is the place where you can talk about it?
Right.
And I just don't know that this is answered, like, okay, if it's not that form and if it's not, if it's only when it's a permit or it's still here, where is the place where somebody can say, but I just don't, this use seems weird to me.
Well, I mean, to me, and the way I see it, is that the place for the discussion is at the actual meeting where the permanent, or the hearing where the permit is evaluated or determined. But do I have that right? I mean, that's really where it is. So I guess if there was a question whether the interpretation was maybe off or invalid or outright or whatever, that should happen at whether it's at the ZBA or, okay.
Okay. Are there any questions in general about this section?
So I'm just trying to get anything said. So the ZBA could question the use. Kathy here. Is that what we just said?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, they can ask, you know, questions of the building inspector, but, you know, you also have to, you know, whether you, whether you agree with it or not, I mean, there's, you know, there's a process that every applicant goes through in town. I mean, some applicants, you know, we meet with over like a two-year period. You know, other applicants, we may meet just a couple of times in a couple of months, you know, before they, you know, go through, you know, start with their application process. So, I mean, sometimes those meetings are, we call them development review meetings and they're on the staff level. But, I mean, most often, it's myself, the building inspector and the town engineer, and if wetlands are involved, the conservation agent. So, you know, we'll meet with the applicant and we'll, again, we'll go through, we'll evaluate their use, we'll, we'll go through, you know, where it is or isn't allowed in the zoning bylaw and then what your process is. You know, so each one of us will go through, you know, what, what are, you know, the board that we're staffing is on, what, you know, what is it that you need to fill out for that board? What are the timeframes? A lot of times, it's, you know, reviewing, you know, preliminary, you know, plans for, you know, what they're proposing to do. And, you know, and we're reviewing it, you know, two, three, you know, sometimes four times, depending on the complexity of the project. And so once someone gets through all that in-house process, then they will file, you know, their, either their application with the planning board or their application with the ZBA. And then, you know, and then, then the whole public hearing, you know, process starts.
Just seems like a lot of work if they go through two years, meaning with town staff, and then they have the chance of it being denied. Like, to me, that process, they know, they know.
They're big boys. I mean, that's, yeah, I mean, they're, that's, I mean, that's what this, you know, business is. I mean, that. I mean, that, they, they are going before the boards, asking whether or not it's, you know, they need special permits and/or variances, you know, and, I mean, that's.
So Carrie, you had a question where a resident asked, at what point along the way can you have like a checks and balances before it actually gets to a planning board or a ZBA and there's a whole package together? And then Kathy just said that they review things on a developmental along the way. I mean, I don't know if that's part of the ZBA and planning board having another discussion down the line. Do they want to be updated on these, you know, developmental checks? Like, someone's coming in and talking to us about this? You know, um, at which point is it too early? Can they even talk about it? I mean, there's things that maybe staff can't talk about, maybe they can talk about. I mean, I did think from a resident standpoint, if they're asking that question, that would be the only early point that you'd get before you get the package before the board. Everything else is sort of done behind the scenes where staff, that's where their jobs are. They're hired to do this and then get everything together for the boards. You know, if the board wants to, to take that process and put it forward a couple of steps. I mean, that's what you have to figure out. Can we do this? Is it too disruptive? Is it too early?
What if you put, what if you put in the process, if there is such a thing, when somebody's coming to town staff and saying, I want to do this. Help me understand what I'm going to need or, I mean, special permits or variances and the process is. And then a part of that response is, if you'd like, you can, we think it's going to be the ZBA or the, or the planning boards you're going to need approvals from. To save yourself some time and effort, would you like to present to them the scope and idea before it goes further to see if they have further questions? I mean, would, am I completely off base here or does that make sense?
We have that not too long ago.
Right.
Someone came wrong, so.
A preliminary? I don't know that you'd want to do that with everything, but.
Well, not, I'm saying, give the, uh, give the.
Wondering when in the process the neighbors could talk before it got to the point.
Well, and that's what the public hearing process is all about.
Right, which is almost on the other end.
I mean, it's, it's the process in Massachusetts. You know, it's no, it's no different in Northborough than it is in Shrewsbury or Warren, Mass. You know, it's, it's the same process that every board has to follow.
Okay, so it sounds like in, in terms of this particular description here, are there any areas for clarification or anything that we want to further keep open for figuring out or?
My questions would kind of be too specific and there's still open applications, so we can.
Well, that's a good point and maybe after, so that we don't get too specific, maybe we will, that some of those applications will close so that we don't get ourselves into a jam with that. And then we can be a little bit more specific about some issues that have come up and need some sort of, something has to be fixed. We have the process, it's not working, it's not working well, in my opinion. So, uh, maybe after those close up, we can read a bit. We also got an interpretation on the, one of the applications for light manufacturing. So just in terms of, as it relates to this, what's specifically on this paper, but not outside of what they've decided here. Is there anything here that we want to further clarify?
Both of my, my questions would be too specific. So again, I can't, I have to talk about it after.
Okay. I think for, um, for something like this, in this case, so for this particular application, it sounds to me like there are certain performance, let's see, what was it, permissioned of? There are performance use standards specific to this type of use. And what I don't think we have the expertise in is to actually decide, determine if this proposal meets the performance use criteria. So what I would want to do.
You're getting into, you're, you're talking about a proposed use that's before you next month?
You know, whereas we have a list of how it fits the criteria for the first pro- for the first application, how does it actually fit the criteria in the second instance? I'd be, that's something, like it lists whatever it was, five different criteria level. How does it actually fit that criteria?
I mean, I'm, I'm wondering if we just sort of recomposed the letter that we sent to the zoning board with the reasons why we thought it didn't, why, if you could justify why we would be off base on that. Do you know what I'm saying?
No, not really. Because I, I mean, he's not going to, he's not going to, he's not going to tell you what, like, you should or shouldn't ask the ZBA. But I have your la- your, your letter, I mean, I.
Right, but I think on the letter, it sort of points why we thought it didn't fit. And if he could sort of say why he thinks it does, parallel, you know, maybe give us a balance on, on what we say versus what his interpretation is. Is that possible?
Well, I can provide him your, your memo.
Yeah.
So that, that, so that he's got your kind of, you know, thinking process.
Maybe.
So I think when you go back, just back to 425, when you talk about light manufacturing, like, he talks about the standards of noise and light and gets a little more details. And he talks a little bit more further down about, you know, permits and such a, and then he talks a little bit more.
The neighborhood.
Right?
Yeah.
The neighborhood, the environment. So then you get a sense of like, oh, okay, I understand, right?
Right.
But on this one, it's literally two sentences, so.
Well, there's no, I mean, there's no, I, I, again, you know, I, they write whatever, you know, they're the attorneys and we, you know, we ask for their advice and this is what they give us. So, uh, my, my take on this is that because the first one is about in an industrial use, there, you have performance standards in the bylaw for industrial uses. So my guess is, is that's why he brought that in there.
Right.
You know, I didn't talk about performance standards when I talked to him.
Yeah.
You know, so he, you know, they know our, their, our bylaw better than we do.
Right, so now I think it's a little more complicated because you have some more, what, where, is it commercial or how the use is in a residential? Where you're right, it doesn't have performance standards, there's no checks and balances, so. I like.
Noticed by the neighbors. No additional parking in the front yard, which it would have on their plot plan has that in the front yard.
Okay. Okay, so there's that, there's maybe just sharing our letter and then anything else for that? Do we need to make a vote on that or anything?
No, but I do think we should just stick with the use like that we're questioning and not, as we said, not get into this question part.
So, so, so how, how does the, um, the application fit the criteria of the home occupation use? And I'll cite the, you know, the section that, that he, you know, was coming in on there. And then, um, and then provide a copy of the, of your memo to the ZBA?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Now, does, um, town council see the whole section of home occupation use? Like, would they see?
They have the bylaw.
They have a copy of the bylaw, okay.
Of course, yeah.
Okay, so we don't have the list though? Okay, anything else on this or we need a whole bit, whole draft? Good, okay. The other thing is the, oh, so, and then in terms of the letter. So we obviously sent a letter about use, we have these additional clarifications. I think that the, so our letter was read and that's fine. Is there anything that, based on hearing this back from town council, I guess speaking further clarification kind of leaves us at a standstill with that anyway in terms of like updating that stance?
I don't know, yeah, I think so.
Okay, so we're good with that still? Okay. Okay, so then we have, do we need a motion on that or anything?
No, just, just that you're, so you're all, you know, obviously you're all in agreement and, and that, that's what I'm forward.
Yep, and if, if you could just include me so when I don't just, I see the answer, I can see the out and the in part of. It just been writing versus pulling. Okay, so then we are, oh, so we're a little over. So then, just in terms of the next item on the agenda is minutes. So did everybody have a chance to review, I think, do we have 17 or just?
Just the fifth. And I have copies, I mean, they, they went out yesterday, but I have, I, I have copies if anyone needs them. No, actually, I gave them to.
I think these are all ones.
I'm thinking, wait a minute, why don't I just have, what?
These are all ones. That's what I read them.
Okay.
I read them a lot.
Thank you.
Like, they thought we did things already.
Yes, you did approve those.
Yeah.
Did everyone have a chance to look at the minutes from September 5th? And we don't have the 17th, we just have.
Correct, yeah.
Did everyone have?
I haven't, I haven't yet, but I wasn't here yet, so.
I was fine with them.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the September 5th minutes.
Okay. Okay, any further discussion? All in favor? Okay. Then for next meeting dates, actually for this, this is now October 17th and that's in the library, you said?
Oh yeah, that's correct, yeah.
So the next meeting is the 17th in the library?
Yeah.
And then, um, we have the next couple of meetings here. You mentioned, um, an election day on the, is that the 5th or we're not, that's not the 5th?
The, um, yeah, you, you don't follow, you don't, oh, that's right, the, no, the, it's the, um, like, state election, but there's not a town election.
Okay, so the 5th is okay, I believe, it's an annual event, okay. So then the 5th is fine.
Yeah, so the 17th, you've got full agenda. You have three hearings, or actually, two hearings and, um, and you've got three applications to review and you have all of those three. Two involve hearings and one, um, doesn't require a hearing, but it's, you know, it's a second decision. And then the, even though probably nobody's thinking in December yet, I just wanted to ask you tonight, do, typically we only meet once in December, um, the beginning of December, so I didn't know if people wanted to make that decision tonight or not.
I think we should wait because it would depend on like the hazardous waste bylaw and the solar bylaw. We might need the two. I think it's too early to make that decision.
I agree.
Sure, okay. And then we also have the 24th at the library and that's for the master plan.
Yeah, that's, uh, yeah, and that public hearing will, you know, for, for you, that, you know, that, I, you know, still need to advertise that and so forth.
Okay, so that's the 24th. Okay, so those are our meeting days and other than that, we don't have any other business? Anyone else to make their motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn, please.
7.
Okay. Meeting adjourned, thank you.